Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Lake Worth Beach Utility City Commission meeting of Tuesday, August 26, 2025. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga?
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McBoy?
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May?
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Segred?
Present.
Vice Mayor Malaga will lead us in the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know DS and I used to switch it around. Present and here.
Yep.
So, any additions, deletions, or reordering?
I have none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I have a light on. Mr. Segred?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of a significant amount of new information that I believe we received in the past week, I would like to make a motion for reconsideration of my motion to move, made on August 19th, to move forward the four-and-a-half-story garage, which I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration.
To reconsider to what?
To give staff 90 days to come back with new plans. So, the significant amount of information that came back was basically, a lot of the elements in the design were no longer feasible based on various things: height, setbacks, step backs. It was all information that we did not have in our presentation, and it was all new information that I received the day after, and then even today, I received additional new information that would render any of those choices that we had in that presentation either impossible or very difficult to move forward with. So, I would like to give staff time, essentially, to come back with designs that would fit within our guidelines for historic and code that had a possibility of being approved by the Historic Board.
Are you talking, are you including setback requirements and things like that?
Yes, so there were issues that came up in terms of setbacks as well as step backs in terms of the height of the building, as well as the overall height of the building, where it was indicated in the presentation it could be 56 foot 3 inches.
58.
The reality is, per those designs, it can only be 45-foot. And so, there's different elements in terms of mixed use versus single use, and so it was just to give staff the time to go back, go over, basically, all the direction we had given, and come up with a feasible design that met our goals but also was well within the bounds of historic and setback. So, that's my reasoning for reconsideration.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Second to the motion.
Thank you. When I got the email afterwards about the setbacks, I'm like, phew, that was a lot. Yeah. So, Madam Vice Mayor? Madam?
I do have a question. How do we do that since it's not on the agenda? Is that something we can, we've never done this in all the years I've been here.
We're going to ask our attorney.
I believe what's being requested is to go ahead and add it to tonight's agenda as a separate agenda item. You could wait until down, you get down in Commissioner's comments to make a motion for reconsideration, but I believe, and the manager can speak to this, initially, we're thinking about putting this on the first meeting, regular meeting in September, but under your rules of procedure, the motion just has to be made by the next regular meeting. So, tonight is really the first meeting after the August 19th meeting.
Okay, I have a question, and this may go out to Mr. Brown or somebody, in terms of what effect would that 90-day, what effect would that 90-day have on, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I'm just practically speaking, what does that do to the project? Anything? Who can speak to that?
Want to talk about 90 days? Because it's in our.
It's recognized under the agreement that there might be some issues with the conceptual design, and so we built that timeframe in if we need to work with SLWD and its architect in terms of figuring out how this could work with the different LDRs and things like that.
Okay, I mean, I don't disagree. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Brown, sorry.
Well, it wasn't going to change the voting. But this obviously stemmed from looking at the direction given at that meeting. The amount of waivers, variances, dealing with the LDR, all the things that would have to happen, it just, we needed to kind of take a step back to say, let's make sure that there's possibly another way to kind of come at this. So, instead of kind of steaming like full charge ahead, like the attorney said, we do have those, that time built in there, and we'd rather take our time, make sure that we kind of hit everything we could possibly hit, look at all the possible options and not try to rush.
Now's the time to do it. Not in the middle of construction or in the middle of the permitting process.
Correct. So, while we respectfully understand the motion was made, it would just be nice to give us a little time to make sure we kind of dot all the i's, cross the t's.
I had wished that that email would have come sooner because we would have had more information. Because one of our frustrations is making decisions, one of our frustrations in coming to decisions often is that we get the, you know, the information that we have to act on pretty quickly, and that was a good example of it coming out like, it was like the next day or two.
Could I comment?
Yeah, I was going to say, yes. Mr. McBoy, were you on, you were on a different thing?
I have a comment on this one, and I have been in the queue for a while.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, I believe this is just to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
Because if the motion for reconsideration is to be heard, you have to do the motion, and then you have, that brings the August 19th motion back on the table, and then you'd have to take a subsequent vote. So, right now, just asking to add that to the agenda.
To the next agenda.
To this agenda.
To this agenda today. I'm okay with that. Where are we going to put it?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Where do you want to put it? Want to do it?
We could do it now, or?
How about after consent agenda before new business, and we'll call it old business?
And what effect does this have on any of the other, does this have any effect on any of the other agenda items that we're looking at tonight? Okay. Okay, so let's, yeah, after consent would be fine.
And put it under like old business?
New business.
Old business A.
Old business. Well, we have no old business, okay. Old business A.
Motion to reconsider. Okay.
Then I'll save my comment.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amended agenda. Second?
I still have an addition, deletion, reordering.
Oh, okay, hold on one second. I'm just taking notes, so I don't forget.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, was there a vote to?
Yes. To put it on the, to put it on the agenda, there was a vote to put it on the agenda, and we decided that we're going to add it as old business A.
Unfinished business A, okay.
Old business A. Or unfinished, okay.
Unfinished. Old, same thing.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. McBoy, you have a comment about something else?
Addition, deletion, reordering, one. In light of the letter that we received, I believe today, concerning the W-Mota project portion, the portion of the W-Mota project relating to the apartment building, I would propose that we table any of the items that relate to that, and somebody who's better on land use can tell me which of those that would apply to. I'm guessing it would apply to C. I don't know if it would apply to A or B. Probably not B, but possibly A. And for the public, we received a letter, re-public comments, agenda item ordinance, oh, well, this would probably enlighten us.
You're not reading into the record, it's, we'll put it in the public.
No, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it relates to item 20, ordinance O7, which is A, 49, which is B, and O6. So, I guess it relates, at least according to the letter, to all three of them. So, I would move that we table those to give time for our legal team to consider the points raised there and advise us before we move forward.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. It might be a little long, but it's a motion.
Not unsurprising. Is there a second? Calling again for a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. And they can always look at that letter and just deal with it as needed, if needed. Okay, so.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay, on account of previous proposal.
Okay. Okay. Presentations. Water Utility. Update by Brian King, Water Utilities interim assistant director.
Best address.
Best, he's always looks good.
Good evening, good evening. Brian King, Assistant Director of Electric Generation T&amp;D Operations. I'm sorry. Brian King, Assistant Director of Electric Generation and T&amp;D Operations and interim Assistant Director for Water Utilities. So, now they got that out of the way. So, I'll try to make this short tonight, you guys got a busy meeting. I will say that next month, it won't be so short, so one of the projects we're working on in water is putting together a comprehensive presentation, if you will, for all of our ongoing projects, some of our past projects, so we can see where money has been spent for the bond funding that we have done in water. So, we are in the process of putting this, this whole project and presentation together, and we anticipate having it here for the September meeting. So, you'll see that coming in September. But, you know, we do have some projects that we can talk about today. Obviously, the nitrification is going on, the chlorine, if you will. The letters have gone out for that, we've had some communication, right. That was, yeah, that was, that was an error. I believe we fixed that. And then, obviously, you'll notice additional flushing, that's all part of the process with that nitrification, and that goes on until the 14th of September.
There's a word that you're using, nitrification?
Yes, 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 that's the word. It's just an additional chlorine blast, if you will, to, to the pipes. Yeah, it keeps the distribution piping clean, it's, it's a process that every water utility uses, so it's nothing unique to Lake Worth Beach. Our lift station refurbishment project, that has kicked off, and that's going to handle five of our lift stations, 5, 13, 15, 18, and 19. And this is one of those projects that goes on year after year, multi-years. We pick some lift stations that we can do each year, we get them done. We have 33 lift stations in Lake Worth Beach, and I believe this project here puts us in the realm of about 70, 80% of them have been refurbished over the last 10 years, but I'll come back and get you that number for next month. But again, so we will be working on that project, this presentation for next month. You'll see that, you know, some of the big projects that we've already completed are the RO membrane replacement, that was replaced, we did the master pump station, pump was replaced, so that was a huge project for us. And then, obviously, for the things that are coming up, we have our chemical pumps that have to be replaced, that's a pretty big project. The SCADA improvements and upgrades, those are all huge projects that you'll see on this presentation next month. RO expansion, I mean, it'll be on the list, not necessarily that we're doing it, but we'll put all these projects out there, and you'll, we'll have the money traced out, you'll see what comes from bonds, what comes from ARPA, what comes from O&M, and so, that'll give you something to look forward to for, for next month.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, bring your popcorn.
Ms. May? Thank you, I'm on the edge of my seat. I have two questions for you. One, when you do your presentation, can you put pictures?
Yes.
Of what these things are, so we can see them?
Sure.
That would be very helpful.
Yes.
And my other question is just personal. So, is it possible, or am I crazy, that there's less water pressure during the day than in the morning and the evening?
I wouldn't, it's not coming out of the pump station, it's not. That pressure, pressure is regulated pretty tight, so it depends on where you are in the system, who also has their faucets on, on that system, is everybody taking a shower at the same exact moment, I mean, all of those things.
No, but it would be the opposite. It would be when nobody was taking the shower, because it's at like 11:00 a.m.
Well, then, it could be the opposite, right. All the sprinklers are off, nobody's using sprinklers at that time, nobody's in the shower.
It doesn't have a lot of pressure, because it's not pulling up a lot, because a lot of people aren't using the water?
No, if it doesn't have a lot of pressure, it means there's a draw in the system, there's a lot of people using the water.
But she's saying they're not at that.
But it's not, it's opposite. It's like at 11:00 a.m., everyone's already at work.
I'll take a look at it, see if we can run some trends and see what the numbers are.
Okay.
And I'll find out where you are, I don't know where you are in the, in the system.
Okay.
Was it just recent? It could have been, we were flushing the hydrant, because we've been flushing hydrants.
No, it's been a while.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McBoy and then Mr. Segred?
Thank you. Could you include, just because it's long anyhow, a little bit of a review of where we are and relative to our neighbors on PFAS and PFOS, the forever chemicals things. I've been given some information that suggested that we are actually noticeably better than some of our neighbors. I suspect that's because of the RO mixing.
Correct, yep.
But that would be nice to know, that, you know, because we did notice in the budget thing that our water is a little bit above the middle of our neighbors, but I suspect our quality is also maybe noticeably above our neighbors. So, that would be one to give us a little bit on that comparison with, with neighbors on that one. Maybe an update on the Phase 2 stuff.
Sure.
And the other one would be, if there is any news to report, one way or the other, on folks that might be interested in our water, that would be helpful, too.
Okay, we will do that, yeah. And Lake Worth water is fantastic, it is, you know, when you look at the quality of Lake Worth Beach's water compared to some of the surrounding communities, but we'll get that for you.
Would you put that in writing for my wife, please?
Yes, absolutely, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segred.
Could you quickly just go over for, for the residents, you know, what the acronyms RO and SCADA are standing for, because you mentioned, oh, big project for SCADA.
Right.
RO.
Right, well.
Just so they know what that, that means.
Right, well, the RO is, is basically reverse osmosis, right? So, that's the membranes for water purification and filtration. So, they are more efficient, if you will, they produce better quality water than, say, a line plant. So, Lake Worth Beach is one of a few municipalities that have their own RO plant. There are some that still don't have an RO, so we are, as far as quality of water, that brings us above quality from, from some of the other neighbors. And SCADA is just your control system, right? It's your, I'm going to, I'm going to lose the.
It's all the electronics.
Right, data acquisition. It's your control system. Supervisor control and data acquisition, yeah. So, back when I was running power plants, I knew that off the top of my head. But, yeah, that's just your control system. When the guys in control go to shut off a well out in the field somewhere, they're, they're sitting in the control, and they press a button to shut that control, that SCADA is what shuts that pump off. It runs analysis, trends, you can see water flow, so that's what we talk about when we say SCADA. It'll set you alarms, hey, this, this pump isn't pumping as much, it'll shut a pump off if it's think it's, it's doing something outside of its parameters. So, those are the kind of things that SCADA does.
I just have one question. Do you have, if you know, any updates or idea about the second monitoring well, the funding from the state for the second monitoring well?
The dual-zone monitoring well?
Yeah.
Yes. As far as the funding for it?
Right.
I believe that was bond money, but I'll follow up and get back to you.
Okay.
I believe it was bond.
I thought we got some money from the state.
We're going to find out on Jared.
It might have been, I'll find out.
Jared on Tuesday.
Jared will be here Tuesday.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much, and thanks for filling in where, where we needed you.
Yeah, she's coming back soon. She'll be back, I think October 1st is her date, so I think she'll be back.
Cool, thank you very much. And next up is our electric utility update by Mr. Owen Mr. Ed Liberty.
Good evening.
President, president of the Florida Municipal Electric Association. Oh, by the way.
There you are. Thank you. Thank you for the recognition. Good evening, everybody. Ed Liberty, Electric Utility Director. First item, I didn't want to go into a lot of length on, but I had to perform my second official duty as the FMEA president. Unfortunately, it was not one we try to do a lot of. There was an incident that happened at OUC where some OUC linemen were injured. I don't have all of the details of the incident, but it required the hospitalization of at least two. I'm not sure, one may still be hospitalized, but that's confidential information for that individual. The official act was a release of funds to the individuals from the lineman assistance fund, which is kept by the Florida Municipal Electric Association, which is self-funded within that organization. So, I did immediately release those funds on Friday morning last week to help those families. Those funds don't come with any requirement on the other side. They're intended to help that individual's family at a time when there's a lot of sudden travel involved, childcare, other arrangements that need to be made while they're, while they're hospitalized.
I said without red tape.
Without red tape, it's just a check that goes to the family immediately.
Because they don't have any income at that time for them.
Well, they probably do have income from their employer, in this case, it would be OUC or any of the other utilities, they would still have their income, but there's a lot of extra expenses that suddenly flood the, the family.
True.
Or the individual while they're undergoing that care, and this is just a way to bridge them through that cash flow crisis, potentially. It's not required to be paid back, it's just a great thing that we do at the association. So, that's one of the things you don't like to have to approve, but when you, when it, when it's required, we, we all immediately approve it. Next item, on the good news front, we did complete this week the, an audit for our transmission operator function. So, when we energized the second tie line, seems like a long time ago now, and entered network operation, we had to undergo an audit by the Southeast Reliability Counselor Committee, which has enforcement capability. The last time we dealt with them was around 2017, 2018, when they fined us for incidents that had occurred in 2015, 2016 timeframe. Glad to report that that audit went extremely well. We went through the audit together with OUC, who's our centralized transmission operator on our behalf, our manager, compliance, and other folks on staff led us through that effort. You'll probably see a presentation on that next meeting. So, that went very well, and we also had some noteworthy praise, noteworthy praise from the auditor on, on how we did and how OUC did in the function. So, we'll be sharing more of that with you next month. Always good to have good news like that from an auditor that says, you're good, and you're doing great. And remember, one of the comments was, we remember when you weren't, and you're doing great. So, that's important. Next thing updated on is the, the progress in the retirement of the Stanton unit that we've been a part of, that's the coal unit. That unit is on track to retire at the end of this year. And I don't mean fiscal year, I mean 12/31. So, everything continues on track. FMPA staff is working closely with OUC to work out the final arrangements and how that contractual relationship will be put to sleep. It's been in place since the 1980s. It's a very large unit, well over 400 megawatts, a lot of equipment, and it has on the same property alongside a sister unit, which is going to remain in service. However, the unit that we're involved with is going to retire for our purposes. For OUC's purposes, they're going to keep it in cold layup, perhaps operated for a few more months. So, the arrangement that FMPA has been working on, on behalf of the owners, which is, includes us, is exactly how that retirement will take place, the bills will cease, what will happen with reserves, what will happen with the eventual transition of that asset over to OUC's books, cost of salvage, salvage value, cost of dismantling it, how that's all, you know, spare parts. Some of the parts may be reusable for the sister unit. So, that's all being worked through. I've gone back and forth with staff at FMPA with my background, but they're, they're well ahead of me. As, I don't think I've come up with a question that they haven't been able to answer that they're addressing in those agreements. What you all need to know is that it's on track, and that at some point, there will be documents that will come here to the city, which will have to be acted on here to formalize the end of that project. Now, we will have long-term responsibility, for example, for ash ponds and waste and things like that, that are stored in these ash ponds or bottom ash. That's the fly ash or the bottom ash that was left over from burning coal, just as if you had a fire pit or a fireplace. That stuff is in ponds on the property. How that's going to be handled and how the, the reserves will cover the long-term care of those facilities into, in some indefinite period of time. I've asked a lot of questions about the reserves, I've been assured that the reserves are considered to be more than adequate, so it's not like we're going to get a bill at, you know, five or 10 years from now, that's not expected, and they anticipate that it's going to be okay. But the, the retirement also includes, if you will, a line in the sand, which says, everything from here forward is on the other unit that we're not a part of. Everything from here prior, we would have exposure on, but that's what the reserves are for. So, you'll be seeing more of that in the coming months. I'm not going to drop that in front of you today, I don't have the documents yet, but they're, they're working through the details. So, the good news on, obviously, on that, or maybe not, obviously, from an environmental front, that's a key portion of our strategies to reduce our carbon footprint and get closer to net zero. That will, that's a big step, giving up coal, and at the same time, we're bringing on a bunch of more solar in December, another 20 megawatts. So, that'll be replaced, replacing the coal. The capacity, not quite, but the, the replacement of the energy, that's, that's going to be a welcome change. So, we continue, for those of you that were not on the commission at that time, we have a goal to be at net zero by 2045, and to be, I think, at a 60% reduction by 2035. So, the decisions we make, when we cast our vote, and these agencies are aimed at meeting that requirement, which commission approved by resolution, so we're marching down that Next item, I wanted to touch base on the apprentice program and fill folks in, because I know there's some, there was some discussion on that. Number one, assure everybody that the apprentice program is continuing, it's not pausing in any way, and to give you some insight as to how that program works. So, we have four apprentices in the program, they're doing an excellent job as far as a week we can see, no reason to suspect otherwise, they're all on their way to a successful graduation, and that's going to continue. The program is actually not run by one individual, it's run by eight individuals that sit on the apprentice committee. There's four people from the labor side and four people from management side. All four of the people on the labor side are certified lineman and carry a lineman card and work as lineman. And on the management side, three of the four on the management side are not lineman, but one is, has been a lineman since the mid-1980s, and is actually an instructor part-time at a school, teaching apprentices. So, when he's not working here, he has a part-time gig, he really likes it, and he's been an instructor there for 15 or 16 years. The committee reviews the progress of these apprentices at least quarterly, we all sign off, and then during the work day, the apprentices are assigned to the various crews, and they rotate them periodically. So, they're getting the field experience, working on a crew under the direction of a foreman, who is a lineman who has risen to the level of foreman. And then, two afternoons, I think Saturday mornings and, and I want to say Wednesday, they come in under the watchful eye of an instructor and do classroom. Proud to announce that we have an instructor who's one of our more senior foremen, who will be taking over as the lead instructor, and that's Mike Gibson. As a matter of fact, Mike Gibson is off to an FMPA meeting tomorrow morning, down in Homestead, a lineman roundtable, where we're going to be getting much more involved with peer reviews and open discussions of our safety programs, how we, how we work, how the, the field work is done, and we're also doing that with our substation engineers and other people as well. We're at the point now where we need to not just benchmark against what we did last year or yesterday or last month, but learn more about our peers, how they do things, and benchmark, and not just do that at the director and assistant director level, but push it all the way down to the foreman level. So, you can expect, in the budgets that you saw yourself, maybe there's a little bit more travel time going on here. We're going to be sending more and more of our workforce, not the ones that are in offices like me, out to these regional meetings with FMPA to, to interact with their peers and come back with, with lessons learned. Now, in terms of Michael Gibson, who's going to take on the role, there was some thought that you just needed an hour's worth of certification training to do this. That's, that's just not quite accurate. There's actually, if I talk about his experience, he's got 60,000 hours. I may be off by a few hours in the report that was given me, but it's a long difference between 1 and 60,000. The minimum requirement is 10,000 hours. In addition to that, there is a certification in adult education, which is required by the state. That's an online program. When I got here, we had one instructor that was certified. Today, we have seven that have undergone that training. So, we have seven who are certified in the program, and after November, we'll be at six, because one of those instructors will, will retire. and after November, we'll be at six, because one of those instructors will retire. This individual, Mike Gibson, has also over 100 hours, long ways from one, over 100 hours of additional instructional training, and he has an additional 10 professional certifications. So Mike Gibson is a fantastic person. I've worked in the past seven or eight years. He does a lot of the new construction that you see around town with his crews, and is very well-regarded. He's also on the apprentice committee. So he will be taking over the program as a lead instructor, but he'll have with him five others, for a total of six instructors, and all of the foremen. So the program will continue well. It's in good hands, and we'll march on. So I hope it gives you some insight to our continuity plan. We wanted to put a plan together a number of years ago, anticipating that there might be a retirement at some point in the future. And, you know, having continuity and a succession plan is important, and it's in place. Take a look at my notes here, make sure I didn't miss anything.
Ed, when those guys graduate, do you get four more?
That'll be up to you folks on how to do that.
Okay, is it in your budget?
They won't graduate until it'll be an issue for the fiscal '27 budget. They're currently into the '26 budget, absolutely. They're going to graduate.
And they graduate in 20...
Yeah, and you all make a decision.
New people in '27. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, good.
Okay. We're going to move into next presentation.
Would you see bond funds and associated projects by Ed Liberty's status?
Yes. Well, I'm going to use a lot of lifelines on this. So we have a PowerPoint presentation coming up, and I'll be assisted by Jason Bailey, David Martin at points, and probably Marcel Corman. You all had indicated that you wanted to see an update. Where are we with all these bond funds? We borrowed a lot of money, or sold a lot of bonds, over 122 million, plus a grant for 23-plus million. That's been promised. And what do we do? What did we do? What do you have to show for it? So we've talked a lot about the reliability improvements, and we're not going to go through reliability data tonight, but we're going to walk you through what we've done. Take my reading glasses off and look up the screen myself. So you'll hear us talk about the System Hardening and Reliability Improvement Program. That is obviously heavily funded or entirely funded. Well, not entirely, but mostly funded by the bonds, a little bit with Pago, but mostly funded by the bonds that we've sold. And you can see that we've sold three tranches of bonds. There was the Series 2020 bond, the Series 2022, and the Series 2025. Now, those bonds included water and sewer funding as well. It was not entirely for the electric utility. It was largely for the electric utility, not entirely so. But we're going to focus tonight just on the pieces that were funded to support the electric utility. As you heard from Assistant Director Brian King, you'll hear more about that from the water side in the next month. We also will mention and explain a bit more the DOE grant, which we received, and the cost share, and how that factors into the bonds that we sold, and what the status of that is. We also have an independent engineer's opinion that we'll share. That was a requirement of the bond resolution, that we conduct these independent assessments from time to time, and we've got that. We'll just provide a highlight, and we've got the whole report. But I think you'll appreciate the highlight, and then there's an appendix. So getting into this, I'm going to ask Jason Bailey to come up and speak to this, and it's the red and blue slide. This is not a political slide. So don't be, this is not that kind of meeting.
But what I will share, as Jason gets ready to speak, is that the red is the portion of a system that would be served at 4 KV, which is the old system, and the blue is the new 26 KV. Let me turn it over to Jason Bailey and let him take it from here. I'll still jump in with some commentary, but he'll take the lead on it.
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Jason Bailey, Assistant Director of System Operations. So like this slide shows, the red is the blue KV, the 4 KV, which is the older system that has not been touched. The blue is the existing 26 at this time. You do see the small pocket up there on the north in College Park that was converted years ago to deal with loading at 18th, and that small pocket in the center there of the city that was due to, we needed to convert that to 26 to get it off Sixth Avenue due to loading concerns back in the day. So, next slide, please. So this is where we're at today, and you can see that we're starting to build out from that Sixth Avenue South area, converting everything to 26. And then also made a new ring along the golf course. So that whole ring of 26 goes from the Sixth Avenue Station all the way up to the 18th Avenue Station. And we're slowly building back now from the golf course to Federal Highway, converting all those customers. And you'll see the rest of the area near Sixth Avenue will get more 26 once that new station comes online. This was all being done in preparation of that new station that's under construction now.
Some things to point out for the public here in the room, and those listening at home. When we talk about 4 KV, that's 4,000-volt distribution system. 26 KV is 26,000-volt distribution. You might ask, "Why 26,000 versus 4,000?" The 4,000-volt system, which is operating at lower voltage, obviously than the 26 KV system, is not able to deliver the same amount of energy for a specific wire size as the 26,000 volt. So you run into problems on the old 4,000-volt system, which might have been perfectly adequate in 1940s and 50s and 60s. But today, with increased electrification, the growth of homes, electric vehicle charging, more electric appliances in homes, computers, more air conditioning, not just air conditioning in one room, now air conditioning in a whole house, it's really stressing the system and the ability to deliver power. So converting to 26 KV allows us to deliver more power in the same right of way. So at the same time, we don't just convert, we endeavor to harden the system. So what we don't want to do is have brand-new stuff on an old pole that's not hardened. So if you look to the west, you say, "Well, not a lot has changed in the west." There was a lot of blue there before, and there's a lot of blue there today. Well, what did you do there? A lot of that had to be hardened. While it was already a 26 KV, it had to be hardened as well. And what's hard to see in these slides is the stuff that didn't necessarily change the neighborhoods, but substations that we rebuilt, which we also spent bond money on, the rebuilding of the main yard, improvements in Hyphaluxo, brand-new equipment out at Canal, the brand-new Seventh Avenue North Station, the new Sixth Avenue South Station, which is underway. So that doesn't necessarily immediately push a lot of blue out, but it's a big portion of where the dollars are being spent. So this gives you an idea of what's happening. And then we'll go to the next slide. Where are we going?
Yeah, so on this slide, like you can see here, that's where the new Sixth Avenue Station, Sixth Avenue South Substation, or Switch Station, is now online at 26 KV, and we'll convert the rest of those circuits in that area. It'll absorb some of the 12th Avenue South Substation. That'll all go to 26, along with the 4 KV house. So that'll give us that whole southern portion out of that new station. And then the next project after that would be to go down and start tackling 15th to get rid of that last little isolated area. Last thing you want is those isolated areas of 4 KV, because 4 and 26 don't match. You can't tie them to each other. So you want these areas to be either all blue or all red, so you can tie them together. At 26, we have a lot more switching capabilities and a lot more switching capacity. So that is our goal, is to get everything, all the backbone, everything to 26, so we can switch and reroute power remotely.
So it's a tremendous logistic exercise to do this without turning the lights out and saying, "Come back in a few years, and we'll let you back in," right? We're not doing that. We're doing it as we go. So what the team has been doing is they'll build or stretch 26 KV backbone to an area, and then begin to move customers over. So they build a new system in parallel with the old system. And then when they've got a sufficient area done where they can take a day of outages on a half-day, they'll do the door hangers and advance notification, then they'll come in and move a bunch of load over to the 26 KV system. And then they'll wreck out the old 4 KV system. So the good news there is that they're no longer on the old 4 KV system, which makes it easier for the customers who are still on the old KV system because they're not sharing it anymore. It makes it a little bit more difficult in the sense that we haven't yet built, for example, the new Sixth Avenue South Substation. If you've noticed, the old station is gone. The new station is just breaking ground. So how did we do that? So we put, a little bit, we did install some temporary transformers in the field to take 26 KV and step it down to 4 KV for the blocks that haven't yet been converted. So we keep leapfrogging through the system and infilling. So over time, you'll see more and more blue. And we want to make sure that we don't just put new wire, new stuff on an old pole that's rotten. So we have to rebuild it as we go through. So it's getting better and better all the time. And you've seen that in the average results. We're not spending time on that tonight, but that's an idea of what happens. Interesting enough, the team has come up, I'm taking this kind of for granted now. They keep coming up with new and better ideas. So the plans that we might have had maybe six years ago, as they do more and more, they say, "Hey, there's a better way to do this," and they keep evolving, evolving, evolving. One of the things that we're really excited about now, and we'll be working on very hard, is a concept to allow us to remove three stations, three of our substations, from the system completely. Because we'll build a 26 KV ring, or series of rings, in the city, which will be underground, just to move power from region to region, that will not feed customers directly from the ring. So one of the problems that we have today, and just don't want to drag anybody in the minutia to give you a sense of the challenge and why, what causes that, I just, we have customers that are directly connected to the backbone. They should not be. They should be connected behind a breaker at a substation. What happens is when there's a problem on that lateral, it cascades over to the backbone, to the ring, if you will. And then it takes out multiple substations, which then leads into 500, 2,000, 3,000 customers being out, for something that should have only taken out maybe 100 or 200. So the new design gets away from that weakness in the system. So historical look back, in 2024, you all voted to formally accept the DOE grant under the GRIP program. And, you know, in came the new administration, and basically paused everything, confirmed that it was in keeping with the things that they wanted to focus on. So we scrubbed it, and we have gotten the, you know, "Go ahead, keep going." What we want to do is get the start date adjusted, because we don't want the five-year clock running from back then if we were paused. That'll be the next thing that we look to get adjusted. But as I understand it, we have the go-ahead to go ahead and start spending money and start submitting expenses. So we're going to do that. So that was a $23.4 million grant. We've mentioned that so many times. I hope everybody knows that we could get that money. The Series 2025 bond includes funds that are required for grant matching. So it's not a $23 million here you go. In order to get the $23 million, you have to undertake projects and match it. So we have to spend 23 of our own to get the 23 from the DOE. Where's the 23 of our own? We're going to show you that. The cost-sharing program. The DOE award did not initially align our city budget cycle, our fiscal year. So that required some gymnastics. So they call it a project year. We call it a fiscal year. You all approve budgets on a fiscal year basis, so we had to do some alignment there. So you can see down at the bottom, where's the cost share? In year one, we got the cost share to get going by taking projects that were in the Series 2022 Bond project plan and moving them into the 2025 plan. But we didn't throw them overboard. We wanted to just move them out to create the match. And there is some overlap between what the DOE was funding and what we were going to be doing anyway. So we didn't have to do a whole lot of extra stuff. We did a staff, an internal review of the bond fund for 2022, and we determined which of the projects, and we've talked about this before, it was a refresher, could be deferred, but not voided, to establish the cost share to get started. We identified projects that could be deferred for the cost share for the first project year, and then we pull those out. So you can see the progression of the spending. So let's go through horizontally across here. So the 2020 bond was the amount of $44.7 million. You can see that in column one. That's the amount that was allotted to the electric utility. $43.279 has been encumbered. That doesn't mean it's been totally spent. That means it's been promised to be spent, because we ordered materials. And we can't order materials without encumbering the funds. We have to watch this very closely so we don't go through the end. That's quite an exercise. Column three gets into the labor and materials. Now, why is column three in here? The reason column three is here is you'll see this in our budgets, which you approve, is typically referred to as OTRA, or rather Contra, Contra, OTRA, something else, the Contra. What is the Contra? It's the dollars that we spend with our own people doing the work. So this gives you an idea of how much was spent with our own people that was then drawn down from the bonds, on work that was eligible to be performed under the bond. So the bonds have had a benefit of allowing us to use capital dollars raised in bond sales to pay for the portion of the work that was being done by our own people. So that means they're not being paid, at the end of the year, when we balance everything out, they're not hitting the O&amp;M budget, which means they're not hitting current electric rates. They're paid for the bond funds, and what hits the bond fund is the annual depreciation, or what hits the budget is the annual depreciation, or the debt service on the bond. So you take that cost, it's capital, and you spread it out over the 30-year life of the asset, as opposed to considering an operating expense, which is hits today immediately. So that has helped to provide more rate stability and help make our rates more competitive. And that's largely work that's being done by our own people. Column four shows you the grant cost share and where we're coming up with the money. And so that helps you lay it out and you see the pattern. There's more work to do. This is an evolving process, as we juggle things around to make the most progress with the dollars that we have. And then you can see the bond balances remaining. So the 2022 bond, rather, the 2020 bond is completely expended. We consider that one to be expended completely. The 2022 bond is about 85% complete in terms of the spend. And the 2025 bond, which we just got, is only about 14% expended. So we have about 70% of all of the borrowings that we've done is expended. Not going to go through each one of these, but you'll have, I know you have other things you really want to get to. But here it is. This is, so the top left are the things that we deferred. The top right is the things that we did not defer. And then the bottom left is, well, that's the grant share cost projects. That's how we move the funds around, and it should all balance. We won't go through all the detail today. But the main thing is we wanted you to know, we're watching these project by project, bond by bond, and tracking it very closely. And I think the public is seeing the benefit of that. Without being troubled with the minutia of everything we have here, they're seeing the results, which is better service and fewer outages. Let me back up a second. Okay, so I've got that. I wanted to put this in here. This came out of the independent engineers' results, their analysis, their conclusion of the report. This is cut and paste, right of the report, that are, in their opinion, we've taken decisive steps over the past five years to modernize infrastructure, reduce risk on the operating side, and position ourselves for long-term reliability. Through retirement of older generation units, which we've talked about, the retirement of our steam units, the S1 and S3 units, I'm sorry, S3 and S5 units, S1 was retired a long time ago. S3 and S5 are increased renewable energy entitlements. That's the FMPA solar projects, which total about 34 megawatts, of which 13-plus is online now. Another 20.9 comes online in December. We've invested in advanced distribution technology, a lot of new equipment evolved into the new Electric System Operations Center. And we'll see how that works. That was all covered through bond funds. And planning for secondary transmission interconnection, which is what we refer to as second tie line, we're demonstrating prudent utility stewardship. Their recommendation, based on historical performance, our generation entitlements, our infrastructure assessments, and planned capital projects, United Utility Engineering, the engineering firm that conducted this, finds that we are making appropriate and well-justified investments to enhance the reliability and resilience of the electric system. This document, not just this page, but the document will be provided to bond council, so it's on file with bond council in case it's ever needed. And we will be doing this periodically. It's not a one-time thing. And then we have an appendix, which gets into a lot more detail, which will, you can see, project by project by project in what we're doing. I would say that in my disclaimer, I would say that this is non-GAAP, you know, a tracking of dollars. It's all subject to audit. We work very closely with finance to make sure that the numbers align. They don't always align. Sometimes we have information that hasn't hit navel line yet, or they may have made some adjustments. But it's very, very darn close to what they would put out there. So it's not an audit-type report.
Will all this go up on the public record on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
In PDF fashion, yes.
I'm sorry?
As a PDF, yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Whew, that's a lot. But thank you. Ms. Malaga.
Thank you. I was actually going to ask if we can possibly put it on our citizen-owned cities-owned utilities page, energy?
Yeah, citizen-ownedenergy.com.
Yes, as well as maybe have Rebecca, the PIO, do a blast of that last synopsis you just gave us, and just making sure that we get some good traction with that. And then maybe deferring people to citizen-owned energy.
Yes.
Website for more in-depth information, if they will.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. We are now up for public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda. Do I have any blue cards up? Anthony Zeitman, followed by Kim Stokes, followed by Kathy Colmeyer.
Anthony Zeitman, 117 18th Avenue South. This last week, I had the pleasure of going up north to New England to escape the heat, which is amazing. I'd never been there before, so it kind of gave me a little bit more perspective on, I think, I don't know, I guess what, in my opinion, is kind of the overall arching idea for Lake Worth Beach. for Lake Worth Beach, which is of course, you know, a very artistic place, the place, I mean, it was amazing. Like, I get it. It was, I spent a lot of time in Maine, New Hampshire, and a little bit in Massachusetts. And there, first of all, there's flowers and trees everywhere. I'm, you know, coming back here, I was kind of like a little bit upset, honestly, that we didn't have enough, because I feel like there's a lot of opportunities, there's a lot of like empty space where, right, where, yeah, I know, the peeping, well, I am probably going to go back in the fall for that. But, but still, it was just, it was so amazing. But I think that it's tough, and it's something that I've fallen into, which is that it's hard to be multiple things at once, right? You can't be two different things at once. And I think that Lake Worth is on the unfortunate side of things that the, on the one hand, we want to be, you know, a place where everybody feels welcome, and, you know, there's a lot of programs to help people that are needy. But on the other hand, we also want to be a modern city. And I feel like it's very difficult to kind of do both of those things well. We can try, and I feel like over the last few years, and I don't think it's anybody's specific fault, I think it's just the situation we find ourselves in. So I just feel like we should be more, I guess, open to like creative solutions for things, instead of just saying, oh, you know, this is a terrible idea, or this is a great idea. So that's kind of what I wanted to say about that. I did put in a request last week, which I did hear back, Mr. Brown, I did hear back from Jeanette, so I know they're working on that, with ground boxes, there were a couple of broken ground boxes by, right down on Federal. So I just kind of took pictures, I sent it to them, they said they're looking into it. And the last thing I wanted to touch on was the garage. I know that they had mentioned it, you know, there's like the, there's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Stokes, followed by Catherine Colmeyer.
Hi, Kim Stokes, 1321 North Al Street. Just a few things I wanted to bring to your attention that I think are a little concerning when it comes to public trust. I find it already a little strange that Wmoda is on the end of a utility meeting, where a lot of people have been following this issue as a development of significant impact, and they would never think to look at this meeting to find it. And now it appears that you're taking an agenda item from next week and putting it here. And I might be wrong about that, and you guys can correct me when you get to it, but I remember seeing the parking garage discussion saying almost exactly what Commissioner Sagritch said. Due to all this new information, we're looking for like a public conversation about what direction you want to go into. So I think a lot of people were expecting to see that next week on the agenda that it was noticed on, on a regular city commission meeting. But tonight, last minute, all of a sudden, it appears to be happening here tonight, which I find concerning. And the last thing, I know you guys love revisiting your rules all the time. I really think it's not a good look when commissioners are texting on their phone during the meeting, and I would really like you to consider a rules change there, because I don't know if it's like a personal emergency, or if you're texting somebody in the audience, and nobody deserves special access to anybody up here that the rest of us don't have. So I hope you consider that during your next rules change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Colmeyer, 503 First Avenue South. This is a comment about the procedures and how the commission is working. And I guess it is appropriate for tonight because now there's going to be an item on the agenda concerning the parking garage design. So at the meeting last week, there was a design team, I believe it's a design team with the parking garage designs proposals. And one thing I'm a bit concerned about was they didn't seem to know what the height limits were. So that's a bit worrying. What was also worrying was that the commission voted, created a motion and voted on something for which there was not backup for anybody, because the four-and-a-half-story solution was not even a proposal on that design team that they were giving you. So I just wondered how you could even vote on something that you didn't have the estimates and the information in front of you. And tonight, it transpires that new information has arrived, so it's going to have to be reconsidered. But I think it's concerning that that was even voted upon with no information on it in the presentation. And that makes me feel that there is an undue recklessness and rush to get something through that is concerning. It's also concerning when I think of how much money that is going to be spent on that garage. It's gone up quite a lot from the $8.5 million. And I know you often express concerns about fiscal responsibility. So items of concern with how this, the business is being conducted at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the minutes. We don't do, it's non-approval of the presentation.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 29, 2025.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business.
Old business.
Or do old business first? All right, old business.
So I would like to propose a motion to reconsider the motion made on August 19 to move forward with a four-and-a-half-story garage conceptual design.
Do I have a second?
Can you restate your motion again?
To reconsider the motion that was made on August 19 to move forward with a four-and-a-half-story garage conceptual design.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
For conversation?
For discussion in general?
Yeah. Any comments? Go ahead, Ms. Malaga.
I have to say that I agree with some of the people who are here, that this isn't the time that we would normally have this conversation, and because this is such a huge ticket item, I would like to have this conversation when the public knows about it.
But that's not his motion. His motion is, remember, we talked earlier today?
Right. I understand that, but I'm saying, if it's already set for a meeting in 10 days, I don't know what the language says on the 10 days from now, what does the agenda, does it say discussion? Or seven days from today? Does it say discussion surrounding that? Can anyone give me that information? Because if we're going to have this discussion at the meeting next week, when the public can have comment and know about it, I feel that that's the time and place for us to do it.
Okay. Now, this is about, because the things on the agenda tonight are not about the garage, they're about the Wmoda project rezoning. I just make sure that we're.
Correct. But I don't want to have this conversation that Mr. Segrits is bringing forward without the public knowing that we're having this conversation.
Right. I think I would like to see it on the next agenda.
Which I think it's already on there for next week.
Excuse me. It says, "A request for a motion to reconsider direction provided for the K Street parking garage conceptual design." That was what was published for the second.
Right.
Right, and he wants to do it tonight, but we already approved to put it on there tonight. Are we going to unapprove that?
No, we approved it for conversation.
We approved it for conversation.
Okay.
And we approved it, I believe, to reconsider it.
But not to move it from the agenda.
Right.
Not to move it from September 2's agenda. That wasn't part of the motion.
What's on the agenda on September 2 specifically?
She just had it.
That motion that I just said, the request.
Okay, so it is the same. Okay.
I was what was possible.
Having this conversation without public input.
I agree.
So I don't want to make any more decisions based on this garage tonight.
I agree with you. Mr. Segrits, your response?
So the reason for bringing it forward today, I was going to bring it forward regardless of whether it was on an agenda in the future or not. It's a matter of timeliness for the project. So, you know, we received new information that basically rendered most of those designs unworkable. And I feel our design team and staff need all the time they can have, which is why I felt it important to bring it up now versus wait a week. And I understand that a week seems like a small amount of time, but when dealing with this and the expenses that we're expending, I feel, you know, every day counts for them. And that's my primary motivation to bring it up. It's not, you know, I'm not saying which direction we're going. I'm not saying, you know, we're going to do a three-story, a four-story, a five-story, but merely I'm saying is we're reconsidering, you know, we're basically saying, it may be a four-and-a-half, but we need staff to come back with better designs and more information. So there's very little other than, to discuss, other than, do we want to give staff more time?
So this would effectively take it off the September 2.
It would effectively take it off there, because the second part to this would be to amend the motion to grant staff more time.
That would be done on Tuesday. We'd add that to the agenda.
Well, we could do it right now.
Or we could do it.
You know, the rules of procedure say that it has to be done prior, well, by the very next regular meeting, which would be next, so.
Well, the motion for reconsideration has to be made. So, all right, so we have a motion which we've approved to discuss it tonight. To, for, so what's the next motion?
Well, can't we?
Okay, Ms. May, just trying to get the context of where we're at.
Okay. So, yeah, let's try to put that into, what are we doing here? So I'm hearing that the motion is, you want to remove the motion for Tuesday in order to have nothing on the agenda about the K Street garage for 90 days, up to 90 days?
Go ahead, answer.
So it's basically recognizing that we received brand-new information.
Right, but just answer my question.
So it would be to give staff up to 90 days to come back with designs that are more fitting.
So, because I have, I read the backup and the staff proposal for Tuesday, and I am very, very upset and very uncomfortable that anything was brought in front of us that was, we can't do.
Right.
That makes us look like morons. Do not bring something to us that we cannot do. So if it takes 90 days to find something that we either can or cannot do, and that we can vote on that, that's, I'm willing to go with that. Because what's on for Tuesday? If we start to talk about those three ideas on Tuesday, they're not well-thought-out, they don't have the background, and I refuse to discuss it until there's more information.
I agree. Mr. McBoy?
I would, I would just comment that I have frequently during the last year raised a concern that we have a rule in our procedure that says there's a deadline to put things on the agenda. If the backup is not complete by that deadline, then it does not go on to the agenda. We have repeatedly, repeatedly violated our own rule. I don't understand why. The rule seems like a very logical one, that if, if we make decisions with good transparency and ability for us to see all the backup information, ability for the community to see all the backup information, if the backup information is not complete, it's very simple. Don't put it on the agenda.
So you agree with taking it off?
Madam Mayor, can I finish my comment without interruption, please? Thank you. I agree with the sentiments that are expressed here, that it was very weird that we obtained information the day after. Clearly, the information was not complete by the deadline, and we should have simply, somebody should have had the gumption, either in their one-on-ones or at staff level, to say the backup is not ready, it doesn't go on the agenda. It's not complicated. If that means that things get pushed down the road, they get pushed down the road because we should, up here, have a clear commitment to that's how we do business, that things have a prescribed amount of time, that all of the backup is available. Not that, go back and look at the posted meetings, you will see any number of them that have the agenda and then a revised one. So somebody comes along and says, oh, there's some additional information. Often, it shows up the day before. Often, the presentations are not in the backup, and the presentations have significant information in them, so that the only people getting it is us at the meeting.
Okay, I am going to interrupt you, Mr. McBoy.
No, please do not.
I am going to interrupt you, because we're trying to get a motion going here, so.
We have a procedural issue.
Mr. McBoy.
No, do not interrupt me. I have the floor, and Robert's rule says I have the floor.
And I may take it away.
Well, you better not. I don't think that's very appropriate. You have a commitment to good governance, and one piece of that is, do not interrupt me when I'm speaking. We have a longstanding procedural one. It has come up in a specific case here. I think the point that Ms. Malaga made, that, you know, why are we putting this on the agenda that nobody knew anything about? I do hear Commissioner Segrits, I believe that our rules say that if you want to undo a decision, that decision has to be put forth by a person who voted for it, and it has to be done at the next meeting. So there's no way, I believe, if I understand Commissioner Segrits' motion, right, is we aren't going to discuss, we aren't going to decide anything, we're pushing the clock out to let appropriate backup, and I support that.
Thank you. Mr. Segrits, do you have any more comments?
I do. I just wanted to, you know, kind of underscore as well, what was put into the September's second, you know, were three directions, three choices of what to do. And that's not what I'm saying, you know, I'm first saying, let's reconsider, which then brings the motion back on the table, and then I'm saying, let's give staff time to come back with something that is appropriate. And as I read through those choices, there's already one of those choices which isn't even feasible, which means, you know, so I didn't want to yet again have another item that was, in my opinion, not ready, not necessarily complete, merely just say, look, let's recognize the fact that we had an issue, let's take pause, and let's do it right.
Right, so we have a motion to bring it, a motion then to bring it, give staff 90 days, take it off the September 2 agenda.
It has to be first reconsider, and then there's a secondary motion.
Well, we did do the motion to reconsider. We didn't have a vote in it. So motion to reconsider by Mr. Segrits. Do I have a second by Ms. May?
Yes, that's been done.
Okay, all in favor?
What? We do need to ask for a public comment.
Oh, public comment, oh, sorry. Peggy Fisher?
Peggy Fisher, 508 North A Street. I agree with the motion to reconsider this and to give staff sufficient time. It's, staff hired the people to do these designs, and they should have gotten the right information. I am going to also comment on the lecturing on, that's going on, and there have been numerous times that I have been present in meetings, when the person who's being the lecturer has asked to have things added to the agenda in the next three days, they didn't have time, they were out of town, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and that means everyone, not the people that were being lectured just now, but also the lecturer. And I have sat in this room for 15 years, listening to those lectures and watching the lecturer not abide by the rules. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Powell, 224 North Palm Way. I've spent a lot of time on this garage design issue. I've spent five hours of my life in meetings where this was like the last thing that was discussed, and still no decision. I would agree that we would be rushing into four-and-a-half stories, because that wasn't even one of the options, and you still brought it forward and voted on it. I couldn't believe it. You don't have a dollar figure associated with it, and you don't have the number of parking space associated with it. Also, that night, Commissioner McBoy asked for this to be tabled, I believe. For one thing, it was like after 10 o'clock when we started talking about it. It was after 11 o'clock when you voted on an option that wasn't even on the list. I mean, this does not look good for Wmoda. And please do not tell me the garage is not related to Wmoda. It very most certainly is. So both Commissioner McBoy and when I got up to say my piece, I said, why don't we wait? We're all so tired. This is very important. It's a lot of money, a lot of money. It's very important. As much as I don't want the garage, let's try to make a good decision. So I really do favor waiting, but this is not a good look. It doesn't give me any confidence that you all know what you're doing. It's millions of dollars, and going to be millions more than what you promised us in the beginning, and maybe not promis- the beginning, and maybe not promised, what you estimated, it was 8.5 million. Also, I don't think staff deserves the blame on this. Staff is taking information that the consult, you asked the consultants for additional, additional options. You had three options in July, you had three more options in, at the last meeting, and you still don't have a choice. That is not free. We're paying a consultant as well as staff time.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you.
Catherine Colmeyer, 503 First Avenue South. Yeah, I just wanted to, something I forgot to say last time, was that the design team, I don't know, are they employed by the, I can't remember the name of the company that's building the garage, is, are they working for them? And are they being paid from the million dollars? The W Moda is contributing for their design time, and how much of that money has gone to all these hours and hours of their time doing designs? I'm worried about how much it's costing us to use that team doing their designs. And they really pushed you for guidance last week. They said, we can't do anything unless you give us guidance, you have, you have to give us guidance. And you kind of reached for something that it turns out is not workable. It just is so concerning, it really is. Doesn't it worry you? Don't you, don't you think it's a bit worrying? It, this whole project is so worrying. It starts, starts off with a wonderful shiny museum, and it's kind of sort of moved into this sort of strange thing with all these tentacles. Anyway, I'll stop there before I start rambling.
Thank you. Let's move to motion in a second. Oh, Ms. Malaga? Thank you.
Thank you. Couple things. We gave staff direction to bring us back pricing and how many spots we would get out of four and a half. We didn't tell them, go build and go design. We asked them to bring us back information. And that, to me, was thinking outside of the box. We didn't choose one, two, or three, because we weren't happy with one, two, or three. Is there a time certain allowable for us to continue this conversation? I just want to make sure that we are protected when it comes to the timeframe that we're supposed to be in. And if we give staff more time, how much more time can staff have to work with the consultants and Mr., Brent? Brent, let's do it, Brent Whitfield, that's doing this for us. What does that look like?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So under the agreement that we have, development agreement, we built in that 90 days in the event that when they came forward with the conceptual design, if there are concerns and further questions, further issues, there could be a 90-day delay sort of in moving forward with the design until it worked out the issues. So that's built into the agreement, so essentially, that's what I believe the subsequent motion would be, to give staff that time to work with SLWD to refine what could be done. Keep in mind that the process that we laid out in the development agreement for the garage has you approving the initial conceptual design, I'm sorry, in the comprehensive agreement, which is the P3 project, which is separate and apart from development agreement, has you reviewing and approving the conceptual design that then kicks off the next stage of starting to really develop the design documents and ultimately the construction documents. That will then come back with a more refined design, and then ultimately come back as a guaranteed maximum price to go into construction. So this is really the first step, but the first step is the most crucial step, to make sure, one, it can come in with a price that the city is willing to pay and provide the spaces that the city needs and wants. So that's the first step, the 90 days are built into the comprehensive agreement to allow us to get past this first step or not.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that in this 90 days, that we have communication between the DIES and the other entities who are doing the design, so we don't have what happened last time. And yes, we have five different personalities, but we have to get on the same page when it comes to this. Dollar figure and height. And I hate to have staff go away for 90 days and work on this, and then come back, and we sit here and go, well, I don't like this, well, I like that. To me, that's a waste of staff time, which is why I wanted to keep the conversation when the public could be here, to give input on height and density and things like that. So that's my biggest concern, is I've watched this happen for five years with the pool. Go design a pool, bring back no pool. And I just don't want to waste staff time, and if we only have a 90-day allotment, I don't want to wait 90 days and us have to start all over again. Do you guys understand my concern?
And it seems like, from my amateur view, I mean, we have a lot of the figures that we have, so they can extrapolate what would work from what they already, from what staff and Brent already know. And that, that's a guess on my part, but I don't know if 90, if staff, 90 days is, can you do it in 60 days?
Well, that's what I was going to suggest, maybe we can get a 35-day update. I don't want to go 90 days and not have this conversation.
No, I agree, I agree.
You know, to me, that's just way too long, it's too long for the public not to know, it's too long for us not to have our opinions before this comes to fruition on a design.
Because we get surprised just as, yeah.
Yeah, so I would be okay with doing, giving them 30 or 35 days to come back with us, but I can't go 90 days.
And we don't have Brent here, but Mr. Waters, who sits stony-faced, saying, oh my God, what have the people done to me?
William Waters, can you say, Director? The preference would be to have some closure on what the goals and the rules and the goalposts are. The challenge with the garage, without it being mixed-use, which is what it's been envisioned since 2018, is that it cannot follow the planned development process, which allows some relaxation in the setbacks and also provides additional height. But if your preference is a single-use garage, it's much more challenging to design that garage, because it has to meet setbacks, because on a vacant piece of property, it's kind of difficult to argue that a variance would be appropriate. The width of our properties are a challenge, but you can design a parking garage with dual ramps that could meet the setbacks, but it will be a far more expensive garage than a prestructured or pre-engineered garage. So it would be very helpful, either through consensus, through the city manager or not, that you all are open to a mixed-use garage. It might have, and we've already floated some ideas, a leisure services component, a parking office, a PBSO out parcel, like little community policing station, and we do have to figure out how to get some sort of activated use along K Street. The fire department removing the ability to put vehicles along that street, which came up at the very last minute, was where we were intending, because we were trying to be very creative, we're trying to figure out how to activate that, that was an area where we thought we could do pop-up shops and food trucks on a periodic basis, which activated use. But now that we can't park on that side of the street, the food trucks are out the window.
Even temporary setups?
You can't park in a firewall.
Okay.
And there's other issues. So the rules of the game have changed almost on a weekly, if not several-day basis. So if the commission, as part of their other motions they're making, can agree on that we, staff's goal or direction is to facilitate some type of mixed-use garage, which may or may not include relocation of historic structures, or it may include a modicum of use other than parking, either at the front of the garage along First Avenue, or may bleed into the garage, that will give us much more breathing room in how we approach the design. Now, my greatest wish would be to know, what is the number of parking spaces you all want? Because all along, from until about, I guess, and I was away, and I apologize having to be away for family, the goal was to have at least 250 spaces in the garage. Well, that number now seems to be a little different, that you would like to have more spaces. Well, how many more spaces would you like us to try to get in the garage that would be acceptable? That is a question that I don't have an answer to, and now there does Brent, and now there does Bruno. And I don't know whether you can provide that to us tonight, but if you think about it, and you can get it to the city manager, that would be helpful, because we've been trying, striving all along to get to 250, and our four-story garage got to 231, and then the four-and-a-half-story garage with the 17s downtown got 26 more spaces, so we were at 258 or 259 or something, but it appeared that that was not enough spaces to meet your desires for a parking garage.
I always wondered why the mixed-use, where that ever disappeared, actually. I thought it would be sort of fun to have something on the street. Mr. McVeigh was up, and we're really spending a lot of time on this. Madam Clerk, can you keep us three minutes for everybody? Mr. Segred, everybody?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. McVeigh?
Yeah, I have a very big concern with this overall project. Now we are going to, hey, we're going to delay it for 90 days, give staff some time to deal with the fact that we didn't have the backup, and we're making decisions on the fly that the public didn't have. Now we're being asked to actually make some serious concrete decisions in a meeting at stuff that was never even on, it's not even on the agenda. That's, that's a no, a hard no to that, which, and I'm concerned that we are concerned about timelines, those are not our timelines, those are timelines set by W Moda that wants things done on their schedule. I'm very sorry, that's not a concern of mine. My concern is the best use of money and the best use of land and the best use of planning for the future for our residents. And I will repeat what I've said many times before, this whole project, if it's such a wonderful project, should come before the residents for a vote, with a clear picture of what is included and what not, paid parking downtown, all sorts of variations, a parking garage that a lot of people don't feel is worth the expense or even needed. So I, I will vote to extend the 90 days. I will not vote to make any sort of decisions now, because that's totally irresponsible to the public.
We're not making any decisions.
We were just asked, could you please give us some directions, perhaps today? In our one-on-ones, well, that's good, public involvement.
Oh, Mr. McVeigh, all right, we're not going to get into arguing with staff. Excuse, please do not insult our staff.
Mr. Segred?
So I would say, you know, we're not making any decisions on it. You know, this is merely to reconsider the motion, and then the second half of this is going to be amend the motion. I agree with Commissioner Malaga about having updates, because it kind of felt like it was in a vacuum right up until that. I would actually say twice a month, at a minimum, for updates on it, because I, I do think.
Ever again.
Yeah, I do think we need to get this done, and need to get, get to these designs quickly. But also, you know, I hear the word want and desire, and with all due respect, the information that was left out was not about want and desire, it was a flat, you can't do this. And, you know, that's not about a want and desire made on a whim. We were not, we were provided with designs that were not feasible, and that should never happen. And however that needs to be corrected, that, that part of it needs to be corrected. The other thing of it is, it's, this isn't designed by what we want. Staff and these consultants are experts in their field, and I strongly feel that they should be bringing us, what's best? Is a mixed-use best because it gives us X, Y, and Z? Well, that should be presented like that, because when we talked in our one-on-ones, and I brought up certain things, it was never raised, never challenged.
The mixed-use thing.
Yeah, no, no challenge, no mention of it or anything. And that's not right, you know. So in this process, you know, I just want to make it clear, we are relying on staff and the experts to not just give us what we want. That's kind of bullcrap. It's, give us what's going to achieve the goals and what's best for the city, but give us your best. We have, we have very smart folks. Give us your best, come up with the best design. And that, that's the reason for, for giving the time. I am concerned about the 90 days. Obviously, it'd be best if we can get it back sooner, so that we can have back and forth, we're not rushed, and that's why, you know, I would, you know, so if we can vote on, on the reconsider, my amended motion would include to have check-ins, mandatory check-ins at least twice a month with this, and hopefully get it done before the 90 days.
Does the second approve the amendment?
I don't think he changed anything.
Yeah, the motion on the table is just to reconsider.
Right, okay, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next motion.
I would like to make a motion to amend the motion from August 19th, to give direction to staff and our consultants to come back within a maximum of 90 days with designs that are achievable, as well as to have at least check-ins twice a month on those designs, so that it's a more collaborative process, so that we get a better outcome.
Do I have a second?
Can I get a clarification of the motion?
Why don't you second for discussion? Second for discussion, if you talk about it.
Second.
By Vice Minister Malaga. Mr. McVeigh?
When you say check-ins, are you meaning that one-on-one discussions in private, or are you meaning something brought in writing to the commission?
Presentation to the commission.
Presentation, okay. Of progress.
Okay, so, are you talking 90 days, or six, how long?
I said 90 days.
Okay, so there'd be six check-ins, I mean, if it went the whole gamut. Not to exceed 90 days. Right.
Yes, not to exceed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. New business. Directive confirmation authorizing Florida Gas Utility to remark in Lake Worth Beach's firm gas transportation capacity on Florida Gas Transmission Systems. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Segred's going to have that.
Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on these, next, on new business?
No, Madam Mayor, I have no public comments on these items.
Do we have any cards here, Mr.? Work Order Number 23.
We didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Work Order Number 23 with Hooper Corporation for Construction Services related to new Sixth Avenue South Substation Distribution Circuits. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. C, Goods and Services Agreement with Gresko Utility Supply, Inc. for the procurement of distribution transformers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Task Order Number Two with Stan Tech Consulting Services for Hydrogeological Consulting Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agreement with A1 Property Services Group for Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacement. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
I just, hold on, we're replacing a roof. That's big. Is that in the CIP? I mean, how much does that cost? What is it? Yeah? I know, I know, thank you. Can you just?
Sure. Brian King, Interim Assistant Director for Water, yeah, that's grant-funded, 100% grant-funded. I believe it's 986, I got to get the exact number, but that is, that's grant funding.
Community development, black grant mitigation.
Okay, thank you. To be precise. Very good. Okay, so I, do we have a motion? Nothing's free. Do I have a motion, we have a motion in a second, do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, public hearings. Madam Attorney, will you read 25-07, second reading?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance Number 202507, ordinance of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending the city's official zoning map from the zoning district of Mixed Juice East, MU-E, to downtown DT on the properties generally located between the west side of South K Street and east side of South M Street, between the south side of Lake Avenue and the north side of First Avenue South, and as more particularly described in Exhibit A, and provided for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, for conversation.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McVeigh's light is on?
Correct. I believe we are all in possession of a letter of concern, I think, I'm not, I mean, it doesn't have a label on it, so I guess I don't know what else to call it, so I'll call it that. This letter comes from Attorneys at Law Hartcell &amp; Osery, and addresses all three of, well, the two ordinances, 07 and 06. of, well, the two ordinances, oh seven and oh six, of which this is oh seven, and Resolution Forty-Nine, all of which relate in one another form to W Moda. I trust that all have read the letter. I don't know whether our legal team has read the letter yet and, and had a chance to digest it, but the conclusion of the letter certainly concerns me as to whether we should be moving forward on these motions, which is why I made the motion earlier to table them. The conclusion, which I would like to read into the record, is the purported benefits of the W Moda project, particularly with respect to affordable housing and public amenities, are speculative, conditional, and unenforceable and violative of Section Three of the Comprehensive Plan and Section twenty-three point two dash thirty-nine of the Implementing Code. Unless and until these agreements are restructured to guarantee tangible, enforceable, and lasting public benefits in workforce housing, the city should refrain, refrain from moving forward. Now, I'm not a legal guy, so I don't know all of the details here, but I think what I'm hearing is that if we were to move forward with these things, we may be violating our own codes, which I've heard from some of my colleagues earlier, a question to our city attorney is, do lawsuits cost us money? And I think the answer was yes, they can. I would think that if we are violating our own code, we are opening ourselves to lawsuits. And I would think it is not very wise, if we've been given notice, and it's four pages of letter with some references to case law and whatnot, things that I don't make sense out of one way or the other, but reading it as best as I could, it looked to me like this was not pulled out of thin air, but that there was some serious grounds to think that we were in fact, if we proceed forward as it currently stands, we would be in violation with some of our things. I personally do not want to vote to move forward with something that opens us up to a lawsuit. I don't think that's good governance or wise use of public funds.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk, keep us at three minutes, please. And I think that if, if someone wrote a letter, as being an attorney, if I had such a, a serious letter that I wanted people to consider, I would submit it earlier than two o'clock on the day that it's being considered. Mr. Seggerich?
So, when we first voted on this, it was quasi-judicial, which was, we were only supposed to consider the evidence in front of us. And I would just ask staff, has anything changed in your assessment that this rezoning meets all of the criteria, A through H?
Nothing has changed.
So it continues to meet all the criteria, A through H, as presented as the evidence in this backup? So I would just, you know, understanding Mr. McVoy, your concerns, you say it violates some things. Do you have anything specific to A through H that it violates?
Would you like me to read from the letter? I certainly could.
No, 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 I'm sorry, wait, stop.
I'm not concerned about the letter, I'm concerned about A through H. Is, is there some violation of A through H that you're aware of that staff is not?
The concerns that are related are just what I stated, that the affordable housing and public amenities portions are speculative and conditional and unenforceable. And therefore that's a violation.
I understand your concern.
And if you want to be...
Mr. McVoy, Mr. Seggerich is speaking.
May, may I answer the question?
You did, sir. So the criteria are consistency, land use pattern, sustainability, availability of public infrastructure, compatibility, direct community sustainability, economic development benefits, economic development impact determination, conventional zoning districts, master plan, site plan compliance with land development regulations, and that's it. None of this talks about the affordable housing component, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it meets all of these criteria and I'm prepared to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, sure, please.
Just from a procedural standpoint.
Sure.
This is also quasi-judicial, but under our quasi-judicial procedures, the hearing occurs at first reading. So the hearing has already occurred. So unless you reopen the hearing, there's no new evidence that is presented. So the letter that was received at two o'clock today is not considered evidence for this hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have public comment. Mr. Clark?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners Howard Clark with the Law Offices of Hartcell, Lozary, PA, on behalf of Lake Worth for all, the ordinance should be denied as inconsistent with the housing element of the City of Lake Worth Comprehensive Plan and therefore contrary to Florida Statute One Six Three Three One Nine Four, which expressly requires that all land development regulations enacted or amended must remain consistent with the adoptive Comprehensive Plan or any element thereof. Objective Three Point One Point Eight, encourage construction of workforce housing units and market rate housing to alleviate the excessive concentration of affordable units in the city and to contribute to the goal of providing a full range of quality residential unit types and prices for current anticipated homeowners and renters in all household income levels. The proposed development fails to satisfy this objective. As drafted, the development agreement undermines the required housing mix by including provisions that jeopardize the performance of the affordable housing component. Section Six Point Six A of the Development Agreement requires the CRA to screen and pre-qualify tenants for the affordable units. If the CRA is unable to provide qualified tenants within twelve months of operation, the developer may return those units to market rate rental housing. In practice, this requires ongoing CRA involvement for fifteen years in order to preserve only eight affordable units. Six Point Six, Section B, after twenty-four months from issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the developer may convert units to the market rate if the CRA fails to identify a qualified tenant within five months of any vacancy. Both provisions grant the developer broad discretion to eliminate affordable housing units well before the stated fifteen-year affordability period. In the present application, the project gains the density bonus for building workforce housing, but is only restricted for a minimum of twelve months contingent upon the CRA finding suitable and undefined tenants, qualified occupants. This, this creates a material risk that the affordable housing component will not be delivered or maintained, making the project inconsistent with Objective Three Point One Eight of the city's housing element.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you, sir. Kim Stokes?
Hi, Kim Stokes, thirteen twenty-one North L Street. It appears that you are not open to the fact that this project guarantees zero affordable units, but will be getting all of the extra, some extra density by maybe providing some affordable units. So that must not be important to you and you'll, you'll care more about the timing of the letter than the substance of it. And I'm here again begging you to listen to the concerns of your constituents. Many are not here tonight. They don't think their voices matter, they don't. And, you know, we're all going to pay for these mistakes that you've made because we've lost, we've lost the trust of the public. Your reckless spending, your lopsided development agreements, all at the expense of us, the taxpayer. And like, I pay my taxes. I think governments, I, I don't complain about paying my taxes. Governments, governments need that money to provide the services to their residents. And I voted for every single tax increase that the counties asked me to vote for. Help fund our schools, yes, I'm there, our schools need money. Help fund infrastructure improvements, yeah, maybe, maybe we'll get the pool fixed, I'm there. Increase my taxes, I'll pay more. Oh, you know, I didn't know you were going to use that money to buy land and then turn around and give it to a developer for free. Like, well, how can I trust the government again when they come asking me to increase my own taxes? Now, we, we just increased our taxes a few months ago last year for affordable housing. We don't have enough affordable housing. We need you to increase your taxes to build a fund so we can help developers provide affordable housing. Yes, we need affordable housing, people need a place to live. Now, we're letting a developer build a hundred and ten units and guaranteeing us not a single unit. I don't trust my government anymore. They're gonna, about to come ask us for more tax increases to fund mobility throughout this county. I believe in mobility. I championed our mobility study and plan. I wanted us to do that, but I don't want to pay more taxes to fund mobility so W Moda can get out of their parking requirements with a shared parking provision when they aren't sharing any parking.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you. Catherine Colmeyer?
I thought I was for the D C.
I have public hearing A.
Oh, my brain's too foggy, how fast.
So, are you coming up? I'll pass, okay. Ginny Powell? Bob by Greg Richter?
Two two four North Palm, Ginny Powell, two two four North Palmway, we're all in a brain fog. Okay, my comments are a little more general. I don't anticipate any, that you don't pass this tonight, but I want to say a few things about the art and the draw to our city. I just went to a really cool museum in Broward County in Dania Beach, and it turns out W Moda was in the, in the upstairs when they had their original museum. This was a really cool museum. It was really kid-friendly, it was very progressive, that's what we need here. I do not think this, I, I hesitate to criticize art because it's, it's subjective, but I just don't think, you've said, Mayor, you've said that we need a draw. This might draw people for a couple of years, they're going to be curious. This is not a draw, it's not kid-friendly at all. I'm hopeful that Chuhuli will be pretty cool, but that's generally much better in a, in a botanical garden type situation and it's not kid-friendly. We need to bring families with kids to keep our city going for the future. You know how I feel about the volume and density, that's nothing new. I think that's going to hurt our downtown and change its character. And, you know, this is to say nothing about the cost to the, to, to the taxpayers and the subsidies, and we all know now that the subsidies are even greater than we knew two weeks ago. And I promise I'll stop ranting eventually, maybe when W Moda gets their fifty thousand visitors per year, I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Richter? Good evening, Greg Richter, twelve oh two South Palmway. Very brief, I am for W Moda. I want the, I think it's great for our downtown, I'm talking about the residents that we're going to put downtown. I want the urban density downtown so we can support the business so that the tax, I, I pay a lot of taxes. I'm tired of the homeowners paying the burden of this city. We need to develop this more urban density, more businesses, successful business, to take some of the burden off homeowners. I'm not real thrilled with the speaker that spoke before, I pay plenty of taxes. And I'm, so anyway, I, I'm just for this thing, we talked about affordable housing, our CRA, twelve hundred affordable housing units in the last four years, twelve hundred. And you're coming up here and complaining about that we're doing one project here and maybe it doesn't reach our thing when we look at what the CRA has done. So this to me is all part of that, when you look at the whole group of what the CRA has done. And the people of this city want this project. There's twenty, thirty people, a lot of them were the same ones that were fighting the Gulf Stream, it's the same story, inflated numbers about what it's costing and what have you. The truth is, people of the city want it and it's a benefit for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have anything from this, on this item?
I have one comment and then I do have someone online.
Okay. Go ahead.
Ms. Robert, I promoted you?
You've been promoted, Ms. Robert.
But she's muted.
But she's muted.
You're muted.
Working on it.
Oh, there we go.
I'm trying to get my camera, I'm not sure how to do it yet.
Oh, that's a still shot.
But I don't have to, I can just speak and that's fine if you guys, sorry about that.
You have two minutes.
Thank you. Deborah Robert, one two seven South K Street, I want to thank you to the Commission, the CRA, community sustainability, everyone in our city have brought us to this point. Items A, B, and C are a big step, but the unanimous yes from our historic board reflects on the meticulous cooperative and flexible demeanor of the entire W Moda team, and I wish to thank them for their steadfast efforts and elegant demeanor throughout this entire process. It's rare to see such open desires from a newcomer, wanting to comply and integrate into the fabric of who we are and who we want to be, no less contributing a living fine art museum adjacent to the county's cultural council. This is going to cement the foundation of our remain, our remaining a proudly diverse, artistic, and welcoming little city with its own vibe. Now, I am on the board of the Benzyton Center and we're growing. We've got seven internationally famous glass blowers flying into Lake Worth Beach to work with our local artists over the course of the upcoming season. We're almost at a point of popularity now where we can't even deal with the people asking to come here. Lake Worth Beach that we can, we can't even accommodate at all. And at the same time, we've got students coming in here from all over as well. W Moda and Benzyton can become a living, working, match made in heaven. They're both not-for-profit, passionate about children, extremely kid-friendly, that's the whole point. Check out the Imagine Museum in S.A., Pete, it's all about kids. They deal with underserved populations and learning. Locations will help to solidify a much-needed bridge between the east and west corridors of our city, between Benzyton and W Moda. And with the apartments, I think it's innovative, W Moda, to work with the CRA for affordable housing and affordable workspaces for artists, meanwhile creating a cultural hub and adding desperately needed market rate rentals downtown. Now, I own my cottage five hundred feet from this project and I sure look forward to seeing people live, work, and flourish where, where now we have blight and dilapidation. My hope tonight is for our commission to see their way through to voting yes completely across the board, and I do thank everyone for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're at three, we're going to keep us, oh, one more.
Yes, I have a comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
My comment is from Sam Smith at one oh nine North Palmway, and the comment was submitted for items A through C in the public hearing. I am confused as to why the W Moda project items are on the utility commission meeting. This appears to be yet another way for the city commission to try and squelch public involvement on this controversial, controversial tax subsidized development that was sold to the public one way and is now a very different animal. I am against all three items, A through Z, but recognize that Clark has previously refused to relea, read related comments from residents on multiple items. I am all for the W Moda project so long as it does not involve public, public money and donation of publicly owned land. There is no reason that taxpayers should be subsidizing this project for a very, very rich man. If he wants to go forward with the project, he should pay for it himself. It was seri, I was seriously disappointed to listen to the last couple of commission meetings where several commissioners talked at length as to how expensive it would be to retain and move the historic structures that are the subject of this rezoning request. It seems like the commission is saying to residents, rules for thee, but none for me. No regular resident would get a COA to possibly demolish a contributing historic structure because they had no place to move it or didn't want to move it or didn't want to spend the money to renovate it. That is not how our HRPB rules work for anyone in this city except, it appears, the city, the CRA, and a rich developer. Expense is not an excuse when I have gone in front of the HRPB. I was required to pay more than double for a new roof under HRPB rules for one of my properties. And the point in moving these structures in part is to buffer the one-story historic community. That's all I have time for, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so, and keep us to three minutes, please. I see Mr. McVoy's light is on.
Thank you. There, the issue here is not whether the CRA supports affordable housing or has built so much, X much, that's irrelevant. This before us, in what leans toward quasi-judicial, even if it's a second hearing, reading on it, is this particular project, this particular developer. Our rules say each project has to do something with affordable housing. And in fact, we should be very aware that we are giving a concrete benefit on the basis of the developer providing that affordable housing. However, what's been pointed out to us legally is that you have a concrete benefit going to the developer with no uncertainty, no whatever to it, whereas their obligation to provide that affordable housing is... provide that affordable housing is, to put it in a legal, technical term, extremely squishy, or, if you would like, speculative, conditional, and unenforceable. That means we are giving a tangible, very definite property right in exchange for squish. I don't think that's a very good idea. I think it's a pretty good basis for a potential lawsuit, and the backup says that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the city strategic plan, and this letter lays out a pretty solid case that it isn't. So I would say unless there's some gosh-fired hurry that we all have to meet some wealthy developer's timeline from elsewhere, I would say the prudent thing to do would be to pause slightly, just like we voted a few minutes ago to pause for not having enough information on the parking garage. I would pause because we have in front of us, whether it's part of the evidence or not, we have a very clear statement that suggests there are good reasons to consider that maybe we would, by voting for this, would be moving forward with a violation of our own rules. Doesn't seem like a very good idea to me.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. So, Ms. Malaga and Mr. Segrich.
Thank you. I'm pretty confident in our staff. I'm pretty confident in our legal team. I know how much time and research went into this, and I was at the historical preservation board when they voted unanimous. I'm also just flabbergasted that we get this letter when we've been talking about W. Moda for how many months, literally three hours, four hours before a meeting. And Commissioner McVeigh's throwing out lawsuit, lawsuit, lawsuit. Well, that's because he's been part of lawsuits to stop development and improvement in this community. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. There's nothing that's been before me that makes me change my mind or is new evidence, so I would like to call the question.
Okay, thank you. We do have Mr. Segrich. She called the question, so. Let's, let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nate?
Okay, that's Mr. McVeigh dissenting. Thank you. Okay, moving on, res, item number B, resolution 49-2025, conditional abandonment of the right-of-way. Do I have a motion?
Doesn't she have to read it?
No.
No, sorry. I'll do the motion.
Okay. So, by May and Malaga. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any cards here, Mr.? Okay, do we have any public comment on that one?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and just, let's keep us timely tonight. Mr. McVeigh? Three minutes.
I think folks should start setting their clocks, because when I come up for conversation, you can guarantee there will be a mention of timely. Happens on a regular basis. We have been remarked upon in urban planning circles in the past for having alleyways, that that is an interesting part of our urban layout and one that is worth protecting. This proposal says, hey, let's give away some more alleyways and right-of-ways to a project that, contrary to some of the statements that have been made recently, does not have wide support in the community. I can tell you any number of people who I have never met before, who have not objected to the Gulf Stream, or not objected to various other projects, who are very concerned about this project and don't think it's a good idea. I challenge my colleagues again that if this whole project is such a good idea and has such broad support in the community, put your money where your mouth is and put it out for a vote. And ask people if they want the public subsidies. Ask people if they want to give away land that's probably worth about 14 million, based on the comp right next door, to give it away to a developer that doesn't need it. Ask people if they want it. I think the proposal that was made by somebody, if a developer wants to do a project and build a museum, and they have the land, they own the land, and they want to finance it themselves, and they don't want to change a bunch of our policies and knock down a bunch of our historic buildings, go for it. But don't do it on the public nickel and pushing it through. The comment was made that, oh, we're only getting this letter at the last minute. You have heard from many, 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 many residents, many, many times, about concerns about this project. The only reason you're seeing a legal letter is because those residents did not feel the least bit heard, and you did not take any steps to determine whether there was public support for this. So, no, I do not support abandoning right-of-ways for this project.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just want to respond, I know, I've been a lawyer since 1808, and I know good legal practices, and when you want to make a point, you don't send a four-page letter to somebody at 2:00 in the afternoon when they're voting that night.
The state and the feds just did that on a federal case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peggy Fisher. Oh, excuse me.
You're right, I am.
You are what?
Somebody wanted to make a comment as I was walking up, and so I responded to them because I said I was going to say something. So I'm glad they are such mind readers, or knitters, or landscapers, or whatever. Peggy Fisher, 508 North A Street. I completely support this abandonment, and I support the whole W. Moda project. It is interesting that many, 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 many people in this city have supported and do support by showing signs in their yard, many, 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 many of whom I do not know, but have requested their, that to show their support for this project. I don't claim to know all 40,000 people who live in this city. I just am supporting a project that I believe is good for our city. I don't have a vested interest in it, other than having gone to the museum. I don't have a vested interest as being part of Lake Worth for All, or putting a Stop W. Moda sign in my yard across from Sunset Ridge, and then saying I can be unbiased in making a decision in a quasi-judicial hearing. That seems sort of contradictory to me and not rational. You've abandoned a mini-property of half alleyways, alleyways, and residential areas to property owners on each side because nothing else is going to be done with them. This allows this whole project to go together, and I support the project and I support this abandonment.
Thank you. Okay, we have, any other cards? Nope. Okay, we have a motion and a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nate? Okay, item number C, which is ordinance number 2025-6. Please read by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, amending the official zoning map by approving the creation of a mixed-use urban planned development district located at 501 through 509 Lake Avenue, 13 through 23 South M Street, 16 through 32 South L Street, 11 South L Street, and 30 South K Street, as more particularly described in Exhibit A, located within the downtown DT zoning district with the future land use designation of downtown mixed-use DMU, subject to specific development standards set forth in Exhibit B and conditions of approval set forth in Exhibit C. Approving a major site plan, approving a development of significant impact, approving two conditional use permits, approving height, density, and intensity bonus incentives through the city's sustainable bonus incentive program, transfer development rights program, and an affordable slash workforce housing program, approving a right-of-way abandonment and providing for severability, complex, and an effective date.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Segrich. Okay, we have public comment. Mr. McVeigh's light is on. Madam Mayor, do you have a public comment on this one? Madam Clerk, we know who rules here. Madam Clerk, do you have public comment cards on this one?
I do. I have one, and I don't want that title.
I can't imagine why. Okay, great. So, Mr. McVeigh?
You don't want to read the public comment? I'm fine either way.
Okay. Ramsey MacLeod?
I think we want to do that.
We usually talk after you discuss.
Ms. Smith, we're inviting you up.
I'm asking.
We're trying to get ourselves.
All right, we're going to hear your public comment first. We have a motion and a second. We're going to hear your public comment.
You'll have to change the rules for me, for sure.
Trust me.
Ramsey MacLeod, 24 South C Street. I just generally want to say, I've been here since the beginning. We've probably been at this close to 18 months, so for people now that are just saying they don't like it, it sounds too big, you have to pay attention. That's all I have, if you want to be involved. As for these arguments about affordable housing is speculative, I'm sorry, how many developments have come to us, before us in the last five to eight years? You'll have so many units of affordable housing. Some haven't even broken ground yet. So at this point, we don't know if they have founding, financing, and they're going to come through, or was that just speculative, too? Every developer that comes in here and says, you know, I'm going to build affordable housing, of course it's not going to be the entire development. You have to understand that there's going to be a percentage of it, and I have no doubt that our staff has given them the percentages and how that equates out to a number of units. So I feel that to say affordable housing is speculative, that's just reaching for something that doesn't exist. We wouldn't approve plans if they weren't continuing to have that. Are all eight units going to be actually in the building with 110 apartments? Some are, some are going to be used in another building if that gets moved. So they have worked with staff, they've worked with, I don't know how many attorneys, between our side and their side. So I feel very confident that we've dotted our i's and we've crossed our t's as to whether it's a good benefit for this city or not, if it's good for kids or not. It can't be for everybody, every age, any way you want to have it. I think this hits a lot of the major points that people are looking for. I think it sets a precedent for our city as we lean more to the artistic and musical and our art vibe. So I think it's a big compliment, and I think was, in the next three years, we're going to have some major money coming in. The Gulf Stream's going to come on board, and that's not one hotel, folks. Look at it. It's actually.
Thank you. That's fine.
Two hotels. Thank you. Ms. Colmeyer?
Catherine Colmeyer, 503 First Avenue South. First of all, may I ask Commissioner McVeigh, is the letter from the attorney in the record?
We don't answer questions.
Oh, okay. So I've been following this project. April 23, I was at a suit meeting for the project when it had a very different face than it does now, and there was no parking garage. In my comments to the commissioners right from the beginning, the response to me was, how could anybody possibly not love Chahuli? Some people are just never happy, which I've raised before. And I was very happy when we had a charrette, which I've also brought up before, which this commission abandoned when, you weren't on the commission then, Commissioner Segrich, this commission abandoned when the W. Moda project arrived. Somehow, we were going to have an RFP going from the charrette we had with loads of public participation that the city spent money on and then just decided to drop. I don't know why. I'm not a person who's never happy. I'm a person who's not happy when you make, take trouble to get public input and then just ignore it. And ever since, the whole time, I have felt not listened to, I really have. I don't just come up here and say, oh, I support it, or I don't support it, or I know lots of people who love it, or I know lots of people who hate it. I come up here with points, things like the 50,000 visitors, which I understand that some people on the commission have said, well, who cares if they have evidence for the 50,000 visitors? We don't care about that. So many things. I have come up with specific points, not just opinions, and they've been disregarded. So the affordable housing issue, the.
Thank you. That's fine.
Oh, God, okay. Thanks. Bye.
And just, you know, FYI, anything that's submitted to the city, there's no record per se, but anything that is submitted is public record.
Okay, good.
Wes Blackman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Wes Blackman, 241 Columbia Drive, and I'm a longtime resident of Lake Worth Beach and a certified urban planner. I'd like to address the late objections raised by Lake Worth for All Inc. This letter arrives at the second reading, when months of review, public hearings, and staff analysis have already been completed. That delay is part of the problem. Meaningful input must come earlier when projects can be shaped, and an attorney is not an expert. It's argument. On substance, the housing and neighborhood elements, element of our comprehensive plan is clear. Goal 3.1 and objective 3.1.8 call for balance of housing, workforce, and market rate to avoid over-concentration of any one type. The W. Moda project supports that balance. It does so in a redevelopment area where investment is most needed. Staff reports have already detailed how this project aligns with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan, supports the city's strategic plan, and is consistent with our adopted land development regulations. To ignore these findings now is to dismiss the professional planning framework that guides us all. Finally, the comprehensive plan is not meant to be wielded as a blunt instrument to block projects at the last minute. It is a guide for orderly growth, neighborhood stability, and balanced housing opportunities. This project advances those goals. For those reasons, I urge you to move forward and support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
My one comment is from Todd Ketchum at 225 South K Street, Apartment 1. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We have finally reached the time for final approval of the W. Moda project. I encourage you to vote yes on moving forward with this project. Despite the naysayers, this project is a great fit for the city. I, for one, look forward to visiting the forthcoming museum and perusing the collection.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. And we have some, let's give, let's do five minutes per, per member of the dimes. Madam Clerk, will you keep track of that?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Am I recognized?
Yes, Mr. McVeigh.
Okay, thank you. Can I get some answers from the attorney on some of this? First question, is the developer paying in lieu of fees for this project, for the, for any portion of the workforce housing?
Yes, I believe, yeah.
No, 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 sir. Sir, mister, thank you very much, but, yeah.
With all due respect, I'll refer to the city attorney for this one.
We don't, hidden, secret attorneys.
Madam Mayor, if possible, I'd like to defer to William Waters on this question because him and his staff are much more versed in the affordable housing.
Sure, wherever the answer comes from.
In the ins and outs.
I'm going to try to answer a lot of your questions before you ask them. Commissioner McVeigh, in the development agreement and other subsequent agreements, it was outlined.
Let's make sure that doesn't count against my time, please.
That's not the way that works. We understand that.
That there were certain values that were requested and discussed to be waived. The entitlement application fee was waived by your agreement. The sustainable bonus fee payment that is normally made, which is half of the Level 2, was waived. The half of the Level 1 was waived. The transfer development right fee was waived. The in lieu of payment for the gap between 15 years and 25 years was enumerated as a, not a fixed number, but a gestimate, and then became a real number, and that was also waived. So if you'd like W. Moda to pay the fee, they could pay it, and then prerogative, write them a check back, giving it back to them, the same way the transfer development right fee would be paid and the sustainable bonus fee. So that number has been considered as part of its application, but this commission chose to waive all of those fees as part of the development agreement to encourage this project to happen in Lake Worth Beach.
So would it be fair to say that not only are we not meeting the 25 years that we normally require, we're letting them do 15 years, that we asked for some sort of compensation for the difference between 15 and 25, and the commission chose to waive that? Is that accurate?
Generally so. But keep in mind, too, this project includes more than one parcel, and the other parcels that are involved in it are required to upfront in. And the other parcels that are involved in it are required to upfront and build first affordable and workforce units. So the end result of this project being fully completed, there will be affordable housing that will meet all the requirements of our comprehensive plan and our affordable housing program, except for the eight that are in the Womota Project, which are only at 15 years instead of 25.
And is it correct to say that it is not guaranteed in any of the writing? And maybe this goes to the attorney, I don't know. I don't mind who answers. It is not guaranteed. In fact, it is guaranteed that, under certain conditions, the developer can rent those at market rate. That is guaranteed. It is not guaranteed that they will, in fact, be in form.
That's actually, from the city's standpoint, that's not true. What, however the agreement works between the CRA and Womota may be one thing, but we are required, as a condition of approval of this project, very, number one, in our planning zoning, every restrictive covenant shall be recorded for the affordable workforce units prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the residential building. And that resident, that covenant will be recorded, stipulating that those eight units must remain workforce-affordable for 15 years. And there's also, under our code, an annual reporting requirement.
Then apparently, the cities, from my understanding, the cities' agreement with the developer does not match the CRAs, because the CRA agreement apparently says, the CRA shall partner with the developer to screen and pre-qualify, or if the CRA is unable to identify qualified candidates to occupy the units within 12 months of operation, the developer shall have the option of returning the units to market rate rentals. So which is it? Is it guaranteed for 15 years that they will be rented at some number of affordable, some number that appropriate to affordable housing? Or isn't it? Because these two languages contradict each other.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. We have Renee Miller on Zoom, and she raised her hand, so.
And I do not want to hear an answer to these questions from the developer. I want to hear it from our own staff.
Ms. Miller will have a chance to speak.
Madam Mayor, if I may address that, the, as you recall, the development agreement, where I believe that language is coming from about what the CRA agrees to with the developer, that's in a development agreement. The development agreement is not a development order. This is their entitlements, and if they've agreed to these entitlements that are before you tonight, then this is what they're bound to, and this will supersede whatever in that development agreement. And I don't know if that's what Renee Miller is going to say, but that would be my argument on behalf of the city, that if they've agreed to this, this is what's going to take precedence.
I don't know. I'm hearing different things. I see things in writing that don't agree. I hear your explanation. I wonder why there is something in writing that says one thing and something with a different part of the public entity, you know, to the public. The CRA and the city are more or less, it's all public money of folks that are related to the city. And if the agreements, if the language doesn't, isn't consistent, it doesn't seem like a very good look for the city. So I don't know. I, I can't sort out the legality of that, but I certainly raise the concern. And in, in comment to something that was stated earlier, just a comment, and this is from some part of a court case, "A comprehensive plan is not a vest-pocket tool for making individual zoning changes based on political vagary. Instead, it is a broad statement of a legislative objective to protect human, environmental, social, and economic resources, and to maintain, through orderly growth and development, the character and stability of present and future land use and development in this state." So I think certainly the letter of intent of the law, I think there are valid concerns that are raised here that would suggest that we might not want to move forward with this, that we might want to make sure, in terms of good governance, that we, in fact, do have as widespread support as has been asserted. Because I can tell you, I have had plenty of people in the community extremely upset about it. A number of them have not shown up here to say anything because they've sort of said, the fix is in. This commission, whether there's pay-to-play or what's going on, who knows?
I beg your pardon.
You can beg it all you want, but that is-
Point of order. Yeah. No, I'm sorry, Mr. McVeigh, you're done. You just accused people of taking bribes.
I call the question, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Commissioner Segrich? All right, four to one.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.